This is one of the first meetings, there'll be several meetings which are scheduled to have council and staff discussion. A presentation was made recently made to you regarding the budget. Initially, we have this work session discussion and then next week after the work session in order to give the citizens enough information or more information than just reading the budget to have some of your knowledge about the questions you're concerned about. Who will be holding a public hearing next week on the 15th for the public. So, we have had several questions from city council members that have been answered to each one of the individual council members and tonight is your chance and availability to discuss the budget internally among yourselves as well as ask additional questions and have discussion with state. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We were not planning on an additional presentation tonight. If there are any areas of the budget that council would like for us to go back and provide some additional information on, we'd be happy to do that also.
I'm just looking at the, and these are just questions for my information. Looking at the revenues which is on page thirty-two and thirty-three of the budget. And again, Ed, I kind of look at what we're projected this year, I'm trying to get it like year-over-year changes. And it looks like there was about a ninety-three dollar or ninety-three thousand or sixty-seven thousand increase in revenue. And then that one-page sheet that you sent out on the general fund shows an increase of ninety-three. Is there going to be, is this balanced or is there going to be any drop down of the general fund?
The proposed budget assumes a seventy-two thousand dollar contribution from time out. Sixty thousand for Ramstow Theater Executive Director and twelve thousand if needed for paramedic training. It's the same as we did last year.
On page thirty-two, and I talked a bit about this today, charge for service on transporting for the advanced life support. Could you kind of explain that for under six thirty-six, zero, 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 on thirty-two?
The question that councilmember Horkel asked, he asked two questions to me today. Councilmember Horkel asked me a question regarding how the salary for the Public Safety Director was split among police and fire. And that split fifty percent police, fifty percent fire and the individual budgets. The other question that councilmember Horkel asked me today was to identify where the transport revenue is seen in the revenue categories. For the ALS, Advanced Life Support Transport, where does that revenue show? And that shows on page thirty-two, line item six thirty-six under total inter-fund revenue up there on the board. Six thirty-six, transport, and that's where you'll see that revenue coming in from the ALS.
Those are assumptions that you're...
Those are based on our best estimates from both the fire department and from AccuMed who's our billing agent. I will point out that AccuMed overestimated what they thought we might be getting back when we purchased the ambulance. They've kind of ratcheted those back down. I think there's a couple of reasons for that as they didn't have maybe a long enough track record with the city, but also the Medicare reimbursements got paid dues after they had made them. So I think at one point they were projecting close to three hundred thousand that we'd be getting. This is a revised estimate that we asked for when we saw that, you know, we weren't getting those numbers and they provided that just before we prepared the budget.
So we're assuming two hundred and twenty thousand then?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. You know, I went through practically every page here and it's cut down to the bare bone. Every department, you know, if there are any increases, very, very small.
I have one question, Ed, on total sales fees and fines. And I forgot to ask this of you earlier, interest income, it's six, six, four point zero, zero, zero. And it shows a percent change of negative fifty-nine point four percent. Is that from, it's on page thirty-three.
Interest income is a little bit challenging for us, the budget for, because of what interest rates are doing. But one of the things that we are constantly looking at with our banks, we have two primary banks. We have PNC which has most of our accounts and then we have Huntington which has our major local streets and all of our sewer fund. But they play games with what they call earnings credit. So sometimes their interest rate that you'll earn on your balances there are higher than earnings credit. And at other times, earnings credits are higher than the interest. And what earnings credits are is they use that to offset your fees. So depending on what that is and how they're adjusting it and what they're trying to do in terms of getting deposits and that sort of things, we'll look at those periodically and sometimes make a switch. So you'll see that the bank fee item and the interest income both sometimes fluctuate a little bit and that's the primary reason. But the bottom line on interest income is back before the Great Recession in two thousand and eight, you were earning about seventy thousand dollars in interest in the general fund. And that interest rate, the Fed is starting to unwind some of their stimulus, but they're still keeping those rates really low. And it's just a really challenging environment, there's really no place to put your money. So we look at, you know, was it better, were we better off trying to offset fees or earn interest? But the net isn't amounting to much either way frankly, just because of a low interest rate. So we went from seventy thousand in addition revenue in previous years prior to oh-eight, oh-nine to fourteen hundred dollars. Yeah, and that number, remember that's the number that sticks in my head. It's gone down from that, sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
I got a question that's on page eleven in the capital improvement plan. It's a Fifth Avenue Beach dignification area. You have a customer that costs twenty-five thousand dollars. On page eight of that, you're still putting in twenty-five thousand dollars. But when you go to the page you're down on the bond which is no fight. Last year you put a six out of those aside. And here's your nineteen dollar that has been recommended, but yet you got a project cost of twenty-five thousand. So are you putting twenty-five in there or are you putting nineteen in there?
An additional nineteen plus a six gets you to twenty-five. Jeff can speak to what we may or may not be able to do with the twenty-five, I don't know how far down it goes.
Well, I see that you're putting it in the following year again. That's right.
So you're looking right here at twenty-five. And I think the purpose for that is there's got a well-defined product.
I understand, and that's to research a little bit.
Right, but we wanted to have some money in there to have something to work with. I think the goal for this really was too, as we had talked about, was to make sure we had additional funds in there this year if we were going to be looking for grants and various other opportunities to have matching funds if we were going to be looking at something. I know Jeff has some ideas, those have not been fleshed out all the way yet. Obviously those ideas will need to go through the Parks and Beautification Commission at some point in time, back to city council for final approval as to what we're talking about doing. But we wanted to ensure, listening to council, listening to the strategic planning process, we wanted to ensure that there was additional revenue in there and trying to build that fund up to help us work towards that goal. Councilmembers, now getting back to your question about interest income. In two thousand and seven, we had seventy-three thousand dollars. And in two thousand, this is later, two thousand and eight, which was before the crash, we had seventy, almost seventy-six thousand. And then it dropped off, out in two thousand and eight, twenty-seven thousand, and then it was ten thousand. So it just totally fell off. And it tracks directly with the Fed Fund Rate Chart if you look at that, which they just basically dropped.
These are just plain, simple interest savings, passbook savings accounts basically?
Yeah, there may have been some CDs in there because at the time CDs were paying some, so maybe a three-month CD or something. We haven't invested in CDs in the general fund in a long time because it doesn't pay anything.
Right, tell me that.
In a water sewer, if you go back on page five in your capital improvement plan, you have three point seven million to set aside for real water sewer projects that you want accomplished this year. Okay, is that all going to be part, how are we funding that?
Well, this is how we budget it for it and this is, that's a good question. So we have a whole variety of costly capital improvements that we need to do in the water and sewer fund. The biggest ones are potentially...
Oh, the old wish list, yeah.
Well, we gotta paint the Maywood tank, we've got potentially...
I got a question on that too. We're painting inside, has anybody looked at the inside of the tank?
Well, let's track your questions, one of you...
Well, the question is if we're painting it one way, if you're going to take it out of service, do the whole thing and do it right. That way, back in service for twenty years, not put out the money for three hundred thousand, come back three years from now after three hundred more that we thought we had taken care of.
The recommendations come from Dixon Engineering and so they're...
On the outside, did they go inside?
According to the last inspection, they did inside.
When was the last inspection?
I don't have that document with me.
Well, that's not been recently left.
I don't know if that's true.
Oh, I don't know, I'm asking.
Well, understand and we'll be happy to get the last time the inspection that day was for you. Considering that I don't know if that was...
I think it says it's okay, yeah. What I'm trying to do is a certain way to make the cost in the future.
Absolutely.
We're taking it down because I believe the last time the inside of that tank was painted was ninety-five, the same time that the outside was painted. And so if the outside needs it, I would assume the inside...
The issue with the outside is that the paint is fine, it's the coating.
The coating cleared.
The coating is what I'm very concerned about. And so when I met with Ira from Dixon, he recommended, well, his position in the report that was done, I think it's about two years old, was that the inside was okay, and I'll confirm that, pull that report out for you, but that the outside was at the end of, the very end of its window of opportunity.
I think that paint, you know, was only good for about fifteen years. We got one, we...
Yeah, more than fifteen out of the ten.
Yeah.
So the plan...
The plan was yours.
The scope of work when I talked with Dixon Engineering is that when that tower was taken out of service for the exterior painting, that they would do an inspection. We also have money budgeted or requested for budget in the cycle to inspect the industrial park tank because it is at the point where it has to be re-inspected from its following paint job also.
And I would, actually, I would say ten years ago. Well, maybe a little bit longer, ninety-three, I believe, ninety-three, ninety-four.
Right, I mean...
That wasn't mine, yours.
Dixon's been inspecting those on the regular intervals.
Yeah, and they're a good firm, there's nothing wrong with what they're doing. I'm just saying, the only question I got here was, I do this, but do it all if it needs to be done.
Yeah, let's make sure, let's look at the report.
Oh, the wish list you got down here.
Well, it's not really, it's not really a wish list. If you look at all of them, they're all items that we have been pushing and pushing, but they're either mandated by the state or critical components that have to be replaced after...
If we put that, for a covered, how long does that last, like, ten years?
According to Dixon Engineering, about twelve to fourteen years.
I thought I would have made a comment twenty, but you might be right on that.
And the issue really is that we have a window of opportunity where we can clear coat it and get twelve to fourteen years for a quarter million dollars or we can wait a year or two and we have to re-strip the whole unit, repaint the whole unit and get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the same twelve years.
Yeah, they recommend that the end of the window for the coating that we have is about fourteen years. Where they've put it on other places in the past fifteen, you know, ten to twenty years, this particular coating that we have has held up only about ten to twelve years. Manistee's has held up very good, in fact, one of the best that Dixon Engineering has seen across the state. But we're in that fourteen, at the end of that fourteen years. So they're basically informing us that at any point in any year, once that stuff starts to peel and crack, it can no longer be recoded and it has to be sandblasted and completely repainted. And the lifespan of the coating as well as repainting it and coating is exactly the same.
So what happens if we decide to go ahead and do a clear covering this year and they get up there and it's already started to crack? And we're stuck with the six hundred and fifty thousand, which is not going to be in the budget?
When they inspected it last, that's correct. I mean, if they get up there and find out that it has cracked, we missed that window, then we'll have to come back and reconfigure that.
And the answer, the answer to that is, Captain, we won't have, if we do a bond, we won't have bonded by the time that they're getting up to look for that, so there'd still be time to resize that bond potentially. And that's what I was going to address before I started asking you about the tank. But once we get to the bond, I can kind of explain some of the differences on that.
Maybe I asked, when did they inspect it last?
I'll have to pull that report and get the date, but I think it was two years ago.
I believe I had the inside inspected, yeah, in two thousand and five, two thousand and four.
I'm trying, I can't remember what condition of the...
You do have to be Catholic. When we were, when we were real late in the budgeting process last year, so it was either the end of April or beginning of May, Dixon came up, brought all the latest inspection reports and gave me a top-to-bottom of what, in fact, I think it was right after the budget was adopted. But they gave me a top-to-bottom of the latest inspection reports and this is the one item that they insisted should be planned for this year, so.
I'll see you in your office on Monday, we'll... Let more... I do support doing that riverbank, where that sewer pipe is. And if you take a look over there now, just right next to that bank, it ain't tight to those pines.
Again?
The old, I... Trees actually fell on it last spring.
Yeah.
And knocked the pipe off of, I think, eight pines. We had an engineering firm come up, do an inspection on it. The pipe is holding, but there's a three-foot sag in that pipe.
That's exposed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exposed.
So my concern, my concern was that that pipe stayed, well, it stays surcharged a hundred percent of the time, which means it's always full of sewage and never empties. And so we've been doing periodic inspections of the manhole upstream in case there's a blockage. And we've also put together a contingency plan so that if it does block, that we've got a plan in place to bypass pump around it, utilizing some equipment out of Grand Rapids and then trying to get it cleaned up. So that project's one of those ones that we have pushed forward, but that bank isn't stable or starting to roll on that bank.
That takes care of the whole large site?
Yes. If there's a priority for this council, if there's a priority between painting the Maywood tank and doing that sewer line, that sewer line by far has much more priority than painting that tank. If that sewer line goes, now you have that, you got to find, and now you're... Or nobody knows what it costs going to be after that. And you might forget about your summer vacations too, if that goes.
It's an interceptor sewer on the north side. So there's two pipelines that run along the river's edge and go to a pump station. This is the one that's to the east of there, between the pump station and the bridge. So it takes in probably about twenty percent of the sewage flow from the north side, but then it also takes in all of the hospital prison and industrial park, all the other stuff.
Some of you recall several years ago when we built a sheet, well, a sheet piled wall put in next to the Sixth Avenue pump station.
Yeah.
And then backfill that to protect that sewer line. That's a similar, I'm not saying exactly, but it's a similar scenario to what we're looking at doing for that particular protection of that sewer system.
Yeah, what's proposed is to put in a sheet pile wall along that entire length and then lay a new gravity pipeline back behind that wall.
Didn't the DNR come in a couple of years ago and wanted us to do a study on that before we put that sheet filing or...
The Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, do a heckle raft survey, I think.
Okay.
It's a hydraulic engineering river analysis system.
Was that completed then?
We've completed that study, we are fully permitted to do that project from both the DEQ and the Corps of Engineers.
I guess I agree with that, between the two. I would think the sewer on the river would be the priority because that goes...
Yeah, the poor priorities, and it got to be handled, and a very timely action, but these are the price tag. How we pay for this, yeah, okay, now we're going to go off for, what is it, SAW grant is what we applied for?
Yes.
Okay, now, run through that, how that SAW is. Is that, is there a match to this or what? Run through it for me, please.
Yeah, the SAW grant covers asset management for the sanitary and the storm sewer system. So as part of our application for the SAW grant, we included monies to completely evaluate all the older pipelines in the sanitary sewer system and some of the storm sewers. Come up with an asset management plan. The only components that it has towards construction is there are design fees for other projects such as the Future Equalization Basin, the future closure of CSO eighteen at Ramstow and Fifth Street. So it doesn't really include any money towards that project. In the future, once we complete an asset management plan and we start repairing or implementing some of the projects that are in that asset management plan, if there are additional monies made available by the state, then you can be eligible for grants or loan interest loans by implementing that asset management plan. But the SAW grant really doesn't impact these proposed projects.
Oh. The SAW grant also doesn't, it's not meant for construction. It's a planning implementation document that allows the asset management plan, but there are non-construction dollars in the SAW grant.
So how are you planning on paper, how are we funding?
So this is, this is what we had to kind of assume in the budget. So Jeff provided me with a list of state-required projects and critical other projects that we needed to bond or that we needed to get done. In order to pay for those out of cash reserves, you would have to raise the rates astronomically. It's kind of like when you want to buy a house, you've got to take out a mortgage. So that's what this bond, proposed bond issue would do. It would fund the high priority projects and repairs that Jeff identified. That bond, we sized it to be roughly three point seven million dollars. And that would get paid back over twenty years, it would be an open market bond. But the point to that is, is once we start looking at that, that bond, it's not issued July first. It may be issued December, may be issued in March of next year.
But this is also, and this is also based on the assumption of the water and sewer rate that we have not seen yet, right?
Well, I can speak to that a little bit too, but let me talk, finish talking about the bond. So the bond, we showed all the expenditures and we showed the revenue coming in in the same year so that you could see what that was. But the reality is you have three years to build those projects and you're not going to build them all in a year one. But you need to have the money there to be able to fund it and it can set in the account and they have to be built in three years. So for simplicity and budgeting purposes, that's how we showed that. We also would likely capitalize one year's interest cost in order to make the numbers work and control rate increases. But if we can talk about that when we go through the rate study. In terms of the rates, this budget proposed, I believe it was a nine percent increase. That is very, very consistent with the rate increase that the rate consultant's going to be showing you next week. So what that says is our internal ratemaking process has been, you know, fairly robust. It's clearly not as detailed as what the rate analysis went out of. One thing to keep in mind, each one percent increase in water and sewer rates generally is twenty-six thousand dollars. So if you were to do a quarter of a million dollar project and pay it for it out of cash reserves and maintain your operating capital and other things like that, you would have to raise rates in that particular year about ten percent. If you do a bond issue, you could stretch those payments out and control the rate increases. But that's the reason that the budget was prepared as it was, was to show the need for the capital projects and to show how it would be funded. If we, if council chooses not to do all of those capital projects, we're still going to have to do some of them and we're still going to have to issue a bond.
Okay, that's the issue I want right there, so we can pick and choose on this?
Well, I would defer to Jeff on that, I think the consensus of San Francisco is that these are things that have already been...
Oh, this whole process, because that's all the big point out there.
But that's what happens when we keep deferring maintenance.
One of the things, I'm not trying to steal the rate consultant's thunder, but one of the things that you'll see next week when he presents that is that the city's water and sewer rate increases over time have lagged behind the US CPI index for water and sewer rate increases, even though we've done all that work. And what that means is there's a lot of systems out there that are either in worse shape than ours with deferred maintenance or similar in age and the cost, the inflation factor for water and sewer is much higher than the general inflation rate. So we've actually done fairly well, even though we've had rate increases, to keep that below that level that you see in the industry wide. And the rate study that's going to be coming out projects out ten years so you can kind of see what the rate increases might look like. But I can't speak to whether these projects are the overall priority of them, but...
When's your direct...
The consensus is...
Curious, just I'll go on.
Yeah, this is a great, this is a great lead-in to next Tuesday's presentation by Burton Associates on the rate analysis.
If I go through the other projects that are included in that, that three point seven million, we've included budget numbers for the equalization basin. We have to disconnect our last combined sewer overflow by the end of two thousand and sixteen. So in order to do that, what's being recommended in the sanitary sewer evaluation study that Admiral's just completing is to build basically another tank that when we have these extra flows, the tank stores those flows and then we release them and treat them through the system as the system can handle it.
How big a tank are you proposing on that?
It hasn't been officially sized yet, but what they are estimating is a half a million gallon tank.
Yeah, that's what mattered, we had thirty years, forty years ago.
Is there the location, I assume?
The location's to be determined also. So what's included in this budget cycle, or what's included in this bond cycle, this bond issue would potentially be, let me rephrase that. The sizing of that equalization basin and the plumery engineering for it is eligible under the SAW grant. We are putting money in now in order to make sure we're in a position to be able to meet our deadlines and our obligations of two thousand and sixteen. If we spend the money today and then we receive the SAW grant the following year, those monies are eligible for reimbursement from the SAW grant, so we would get those back. But we have to front-load the cost for those.
We missed the first cycle on the SAW grant, is that complete?
We did, I think we were number two hundred and sixteen, Sean probably knows that off the top of his head. We were number two sixteen, I think they funded through ninety-two. They were funded through ninety-two and remember, it was, it was not based upon completeness of applications, it was a random draw of a hat.
It was a pure lottery.
It was a pure lottery.
They determined all the applications, whether or not they were eligible and met the requirements. Once they were, they were put in a bin.
So two sixteen's not all bad, folks. Much better than five twenty for some of our neighbors around in Manistee County. We, two sixteen puts us in a good position.
Our privy position?
Yes, it's our private position.
As long as funding is maintained by the state for the three-year period.
Second or third year.
Then we would have, we would be funded in the second or the third year.
Can we move up ninety-two then? That means there'll be ninety-two less eligible.
Yes.
Our number stays the same, but...
Yes.
And what they do is...
Ninety-two has been gone away.
Assuming that all ninety-two complete their projects, big assumption, ninety-seven to fifty-eight.
What's their timeframe on completing the projects?
For us?
No, no, for that...
I think they're on manual cycle.
The SAW grant, the SAW grant applicants were pulled, they were all pulled in the lottery and then created that priority list. Then they started going from number one and they started at ninety-seven million, pulled... Then they started going from number one and they started at 97 million, pulled the first project, deducted how much they applied for and kept pulling until the 97 million was gone. Then the legislature has recently approved in, was it October? This upcoming fall?
Yeah, the potential to release the next funds would be the fiscal year for the state. So that would be in October of this year, so Manistee potentially can receive funds this October.
We're right on that cusp, right on here.
As they start with the new 97 million in October, they will start pulling projects and we will either be right at the, one of the last projects funded this year or one of the first projects funded in the.
So some of the ones above us that don't have as much volume, that keeps on going farther. It could be 120 next year.
Correct.
Just depends on how much funds they requested.
If you remember, the maximum you can ask for is $2 million.
Yeah.
But if there were 100 of them that were at, that were at, you know, $500,000, then we would certainly bubble up to the funded range.
Sure. But if not, it would be the following October that we would probably see.
October 16.
As long as the state keeps that, funds that next 97 million.
Yeah.
16, yeah.
So the 216, all being equal, not bad.
So the Riverbank Sewer Line is about $850,000, right?
Right. Can I just go, well, so the Riverbank Sewer Project. The Riverbank Sewer Project is one of them. The Equalization Basin, the closure of CSO 18, the Sixth Avenue Pump Station, which was, we have been required to replace as part of a permit about four or five years ago. We have had to renew that, our permits on the construction permits once, and so we're getting, at the end of this year, we would have to renew it for a second time. And the state's pushing on us a little bit there. So.
Does everyone know where the CSO that Jeff is referring to is located?
The CSO OF?
That's CSO for us to take off line.
It's located in a, what's called a diversion chamber at the intersection of Fifth Street and Ramstow Street.
Yeah, we were down.
We basically have two 36-inch pipes that come into a manhole and we have one 24-inch that leaves it. And so as flows come in that are more than what the pipeline downstream can handle, it tops over a weir and then it discharges into a storm sewer back out to Manistee Lake.
I believe that's a 36, Jeff.
Leaving it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got a 27 in it. I think of it, 36 and 27 coming together, that's weird.
Yeah, so when we've had, when we've had this snowbells the last few weeks and the rain that we had a couple of weeks ago, we have been discharging, we have been discharging sewage over that weir and have been monitoring and checking and reporting it.
CSO.
Now, as going through your capital project summary for the 214, 15, is this, are you gonna prioritize these or is this what you want done for the coming budget year?
That's where we started, is where do you prioritize them? But as soon as, as soon as you put in one of those bigger projects, then there's not cash available without a major rate increase to do those. So then we looked at, we started talking about what other financing options are available. We started talking about the bond issue. We decided, and it's not a wish list, it's let's clean up all the obligations that we have at one time and do a bond and get those out of the way and meet the requirements.
So everything in 14, 15, you would like to get a bond?
Well, when we talk about the equalization basin, we're required to complete by 2016. What regard was to do that?
State of Michigan. That was part of our 1996.
CSO project.
Fixed date schedule.
Fixed date schedule, the State of Michigan.
Maybe in the project, in this budget, you've got 4 million capital improvement projects budgeted in this budget.
Correct.
On that 4 million, can you just briefly, just go through how that 4 million is being funded?
Are you talking about just for water and sewer or for?
This is the total capital project summary on page 5. Page 5 in the capital improvement plan? If I read your notice correctly, that 4 million is built into this year's budget.
Kevin pointed out a clerical error on this, that one spot it shows 5.9 million in the text and another spot it shows 5.7. One of my fields didn't automatically update, so I will correct that, but if you're looking at this, the capital projects by type on page 5 in the capital improvement fund basically mirrors the funding source for those. So you've got, the biggest fault of that water and sewer would be from water and sewer rate pairs. That would be the source of funding for that. You would finance it through a bond issue. Streets, 835,000, that has a variety of funding sources and remember, this is a five-year, five-year plan, so some of that would be from the development agreement with Reith Riley. I think there's a number in there that would be proposed if we got a small urban grant, which is probably about 375,000. The rest of that would be paid for by the street funds. There is not anything in this budget nor in the capital improvement fund that addresses the multi-year street improvement plan that needs additional revenue. That's a parallel process that we're working on and we didn't think it would be proven to include it in the budget because it's a parallel process. Parks, 275,000, that's almost all funded out of the capital improvement fund. Boat launch, 325,000, that would be paid for if there was money available by grants and that would be to do Ninth Street. That's probably not gonna happen, but it's there just as a placeholder. The motor pool is paid for out of the motor pool fund. Buildings, some of those are probably general funds, some of those are capital improvement funds, so you get an idea of where those sources are. But the vast majority of that comes from the rate pairs and the water and sewer utilities.
And that's already figured in with that percent increase that's in the budget? It's being covered by?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, these are great conversations leading into that.
I know the presentation next week. That CSO, was it 008? Not 007. No, I'm talking about the 008 one, Century Terrace.
Right.
That's the one that we had the real problem with. What was that, October of last year?
It was April of last year.
April.
One year ago today.
Yeah.
That's another diversion chamber that has a weir in it and we have, the difference with that chamber is the sanitary sewer in that chamber has been walled off, if you will, and separated from the storm sewer. So the storm sewer flows past it, the sanitary sewer flows by it, but the wall doesn't go to the top, so there's a gap. And what happened is we had a plug in the pipeline downstream, which happens in the sewer system quite often. It's pretty normal. But when that backed up, it raised the sewage elevation to a point where it topped that wall and then it discharged out to the river.
And it just so happened that DNR and DEQ and all those were just, you're going by and.
But they were all the enforcement people out of financing. And so we received a notice of violation where we illegally discharge sewage to the river. And what we're working on right now is, the fix is pretty easy. The fix to build that wall up is pretty inexpensive to do. The problem is that once we build that wall, then we never have access to this 27-inch pipe that chokes down to a 12-inch pipe. So what's being proposed today is to, is to cut a hole in the top of that chamber and build a manhole up above it so that we can have access to get in and maintain and clean that out in the future.
Good.
That makes sense.
So there's no project that you listed under the water and sewer of the 3.3 million? We need to increase our water rates predominantly to cover these projects, which is built into the budget, right, at 9%?
We are obligated to do all those projects with the exception of painting the tank. Painting the tank, I think, makes good fiscal sense and good maintenance sense, but it is not an obligation by the state at this point.
Well, I'm wondering, even though they're all obligations, if there is some that we can put out 2015, 16 to say, okay, we'll increase our rates 7% this year or 6% this year and then catch, you know, so that rate increase is just a little bit less. You know, we're gonna get there at 9%, but.
I'm looking at these and I'm like, a lot of these, we've pushed back and pushed back the whole time I've been on council for four years and we can only push back so much.
Well, we've talked through that whole process about ramping up the rate increases and I think when you see the presentation on the rate study next week, you'll be able to explain the thought process behind what's being proposed today. And it's not really a 9% rate increase, it's a 9% revenue increase. And so that rate study's gonna show that there's different ways to be able to do that and then project out in the future years what those potential increases would be and how that generates capital for us so that we can do these maintenance projects without having to do bond issues for them.
So when they did that study, were these projects kept in mind in that study?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I just have one question. The emergency response trailer, explain that.
That really came to light after the water main break that occurred on US 31 in January. And we've got a water main break, it's in the middle of a highway and we're scrambling and basically after that event, we sat down and we kinda did a debriefing on it. And one of the things that's very obvious is that all the tools that we have and need for repairing water service breaks, water main breaks and those sort of things, they're all stored in the building. And so what's being proposed is, as opposed to pulling those out of the building and loading them into trucks every time we have a problem or need to respond, purchasing a trailer, you know, a one-time trailer that we can stock with all that equipment. We don't need to buy a lot more new equipment. It's just stocking them, keeping it all together so that when we do have those situations, it's simply hooking up the trailer, taking it to the site and everything we need is there.
Do we have the new water truck?
Yes.
Any service now?
Yes, it came in a couple of weeks ago.
Would that truck hold all the tools and everything?
You know, that truck is a different purpose than what this trailer would be. That truck is full of maintenance items for service calls, like meters, parts. So it's a whole different set of that department. That truck, there's one person every week that's on the service calls and so they're responding to customer issues, customer complaints, stuck meters, you know, leaks inside a house. And so that truck kind of serves its own purpose. And then we've got another pickup truck that then, two pickup trucks, that then normally go out and do all the other work like, excuse me, valve turning, the valve insertion works, the repairs, flushing hydrants and that sort of thing. So they're really two different segments of the work.
Now, the trailer, do we have a certain type of trailer and cost that you're looking at for this?
Right, we're looking at just, I think it's a seven by 12 enclosed trailer.
General utility?
Yep, yep, just a standard like a Hallmark trailer that we can, we've actually taken the shelving out of the van that we just are, that we're trading in for that new service truck. And so we can put our own shelving in there, we can keep the own equipment hanging on the sides and it's there and readily available.
That's the one on page 25 right now.
I think there's a picture in there.
Yeah, it is. And then the, just to drop back to the tank, the newer tank, if we don't recode it, what would be the lifetime? I think you probably said that, but, you know, it's gone. If we don't recode it this coming year, what is the life expectancy of that? Is it three more years?
How long do we let it go?
There's a, there's a coating, a clear coating on it that protects the paint and the paint protects the steel. Once that clear coating is gone, then it starts to affect the paint. Once the paint goes, then it starts to rust. If you look at, if you look at the Oaks Prisons Water Tower, they've let that go to the point where it's rusted all the way through. Once you get to that point, now you've got structural issues with the tank and heavy welding and maintenance.
It's also a cathodic protection too.
Right.
It's a combination of both. Yeah, I have a question also while we're going through that. But you know, you're gonna put in a generator in Renaissance Park, which is a good idea. You have a generator at Drumbo Street, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you put a generator at Arthur Street? Because once that flow goes down, you're not just pushing that flow all the way to Arthur Street and you don't do that instead of buying a portable pump.
Right.
Put a portable pump, I mean, doesn't make sense what you're doing.
I think we've, the sewage department has talked about that and the generator at Arthur Street is certainly on the future list. But the conversation was that because that pump station is remote, 'cause it's way out in Renaissance Park, that when we deploy our portable generators, oftentimes we have to move them around periodically from station to station.
On that.
So for us to move it from Arthur Street to Sixth Avenue to another one is a much easier, shorter cycle than having to run it all the way out to Renaissance Park.
That's not my question. My question is, and you've got generators, all the way down, pushing the water all the way to Arthur Street. At Arthur Street, you don't have a generator unless you plan on putting your portable there. But instead of putting a portable there, instead of buying your six-inch pump, put that off here, put a portable, I mean, put your stationary generator there and then you've got the whole system coming from the prison right into Sixth Avenue. I'm generalizing, nobody has to go home. Well, you have to go check it, but I mean, you got, you got permit generators right there, so the portable, you can take the portable wherever you need it to get your pump the following year.
Right.
Because that six-inch pump is bigger than what, yeah, you need one, but that's apparently. The generator's much more important going to Arthur Street than that six-inch pump that's in there.
Is there a whiteboard? Because I'm lost when he's talking about where all of these different generators would be.
To map them out?
Yes.
Well, Renaissance Park, or I'm sorry, the Oaks Pump Station starts at the prison and it pumps to M55.
Right.
Then it flows, actually flows to the south in the Renaissance Park, through the Nestor Park.
That part I got.
Renaissance Park, then, Homestead, all the way up to where the Myers Site's gonna be across from the Mobile Home Park where the old Dry Dock used to be.
Okay.
Then it flows to the west until it gets to the Drumbo Street Pump Station down where Insta Launch is. That pumps again out to 31 and pumps it all the way down to Burger King. Okay? Then it goes into another gravity pipeline and it flows down 31 until it gets to Arthur Street where the old Consumers Energy Building was. And then it has to be lifted again and it goes a short distance, goes into gravity sewer. Then it flows all the way through the neighborhoods until it gets to Sixth Avenue. And then another pump pumps it down underneath the river and back up to River Street.
Okay. And what you're recommending is that the generator, instead of being at Renaissance Park?
Oh, no. All I'm saying, instead of buying the six-inch pump that they are, that they have in the first year, postpone that to the second year and put a stationary generator that's just about a wash mark for the price. Put it at Arthur Street, so that way you have a constant generating, generators that all your pump stations go to Sixth Avenue pumping the water across the.
There are two, there are two important things about that.
Now I got it.
I'm just trying to keep the generators, keep the flow going all the way down. It's a stop.
There are two important things with that portable generator that's being proposed. One is it is self-priming, so.
Portable pump, you said generator, it's portable pump?
I mean, I'm sorry, the portable pump. The portable pump is a self-priming pump. So it will pass larger solids and when we're on water main breaks or at a pump station, you don't have to, you don't have to work on the machine to get it to start pumping.
And understand, but you have to understand the capacity of a six-inch.
The other, the other thing is that it has deployable floats in it so that we can make that as a portable pump station so that if we have a panel that fries or we're completely out of power and, you know, the motor seizes or something like that, then then we can deploy that. And so ultimately, the conversation was that that adds more flexibility to the overall system and in the future, we wanted to add a generator at Arthur Street.
The six-inch pump is part of your pump station, I agree. Understand the bottom of water, you can pump it with those things, you know? And you're gonna end up starving it more in not using it than using it, but it's a darn good idea, which I had when I was there. I still think the generators.
So you're.
I'm gonna oppose it, just that one's fine. I'll say that, these are all the needed things, these are all the things I had on a wish list for the last 20 years. So all these are necessary things, you know?
Your recommendation would be is to swap the $55,000 Arthur Street generator for the $38,000 portable pump.
Something like.
And just swap those in.
Just probably swap them off, but I'm not running the department anymore. That's blowing my logic. You know, and I thought in the money scheme of things, if you're gonna do something like that, it flows much better. And, yeah, you do need a portable pump. And, yeah, you do need a portable pump station, but the generator you're going to use much more than a portable pump station. But I understand.
Well, and one of the, one of the issues that we're having right now is sweet numb. And sweet numb, no matter, no matter how, we're limited, we're limited on the size of pumps we can put in there because of the three-inch force mean that leaves there.
I know.
We know with the amount of I and I out there, that several times during the year, we need that portable pump station to run through the night and over the weekend.
Isn't that a, you're still getting the I and I, you're still getting the tremendous amount of water?
Yes.
So they're coming up by, out of that one panel, that's in the, be the west?
We have.
The north and west of that?
We tore that all out and rebuilt that and made it hydrolically tight this.
And you're still getting it? Where is it coming from? And can I, let me ask, I'm curious, because that was a, that was a bummer.
The theory is, honestly, the theory is that when that pipeline was put on, put in, they put, they stubbed out laterals to every one of the lines.
Yes, sir.
And I believe that those laterals are all drawing groundwater into them.
Ooh, might be. And you know what? Wherever those lateral were, it came up, it came up all about, what, about eight foot? And then a four-by-four was stuck at the end of it. I was always against putting the four-by-four there, but that's what everybody wants. Oh, it'll be there for years. Well, I tell you what, five years later, you couldn't find them.
Yeah, as part of the soccer, we'll be able to televise those lines and be able to see whether or not we've got inflow coming from those. And then we've had some internal conversations about even internally ground-in, ground-in will shut if necessary.
Good plan. I agree with that. And I guess we'll learn more about the water rate when, next week, when we have a presentation. Are we supposed to work with all this? This is like, this is going to be interesting, because what are we proposing in the fall for roads?
We are working on that as we speak simultaneously also. It's my goal that next week, along with, along with the presentation to council regarding the utility rate study, we're also going to be making, giving council an update as to where at with the street funding, where our conversations have led, where we're at the process that we're talking about. And we'll be giving council an update at that point in time. They're taking a tremendous amount of time, and they deserve a tremendous amount of time to ensure that we provide that information to council.
And we discussed it, I would like to see at least a few of the citizens on the committee to talk about it, too. I think it's important if we're going to, no matter what we're going to do.
That'll be part of the conversation. I guess from my perspective, I want to ensure that, and by no shape or form of mind do I believe that we can't have citizen involvement, so please don't even come to even close to that conclusion. But we need people that fully understand a road system, understand what a base is, understand all of this information. And we really need to draw upon those professionals to provide counsel with the most accurate data as possible, and really take the, and take the emotion out of this discussion. This is not going to be an emotional discussion for me, this is going to be a data-driven discussion for me. This is going to be about, what is the base of the road? What is the traffic volume of the road? What's the core of the road? What is the pacer rating of the road? What are the options to fix that road? Remember, we've talked about this multiple times. What's the right fix at the right time, at the right price, to fix those roads? So, now I recognize that whatever we discuss has to be equally distributed throughout the city. I fully understand that particular concept. But we need to stay focused on data and not emotion as to, this is my road, or that's my road. It really needs to be a very data-driven process in order to make the right decision, I believe, personally.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, if I'm in the lead here, on page 62 for the current budget?
Are we talking about the budget, or are we talking about the capital group plan?
Oh, on the budget, page 62. Okay? And I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the overtime.
Let me flip.
Oh, the 69.2% increase?
Yeah, I went through that, but, you know, I guess the question is how we, if we'd be doing a skate break next year, I would assume by the overtime, can we use them for plod running and stuff? I will key explain. That's what, that's what you'd call it more, probably was.
Majority of the overtime comes from cleaning, having an employee come in two times a day on Saturdays and Sundays during the summer season to clean all the bathrooms. And it was made very clear to me that that's what was expected in the community. And I don't think that we were staffing it to that level in the past.
Okay, I got no problem either, so I encourage that.
It's actually a decrease of 5,500 over this year. If you look at projected 16,500, I'm assuming that's going to be.
What we're talking about doing is changing, is altering the schedules of the staff so that we can straddle the weekends and not have to pay overtime to do that cleaning, but pay straight time to be able to do that clean.
And that's more aligned with the 2013 actual.
Correct.
Now, can you use summer help for that, or is it contractual that?
If we.
From the tails I could.
Altering. If we schedule it, then we can avoid that issue.
This is where I did, I was doing fun with the wrong Robin, so.
But mind you, it has been, it has been a goal, it's not been a goal, it's been a directive of council for X number of years, that we have our restrooms cleaned twice a day, seven days a week, from Memorial Day, which starts on May 26. So if you think of Memorial Day from Jeff's perspective, everything from this point forward to, to May 26, he's ramping up everything to have everything ready by May 26. That includes having the parks open, that includes having the beach level, that includes having the restrooms open, that includes a cleanup effort in conjunction with the DDA, Riverwalk. I'm missing several things, but you're getting the point, that we have made a commitment, and we haven't always honored that commitment over the past several years. But we have made a commitment to council and the community that, and it used to actually be in our strategic plan, that we will have the facilities open, facilities open by Memorial Day of each year. And so from the state forward, this is the direction right now that we're pushing.
That was one of our big, the big complaints from the citizens, the restroom.
Yes.
Were cleaned enough, and they were dirty.
Now, now, mind you, now, mind you, I can promise you that even though we clean the restrooms twice a day, all it takes is one individual coming in 15 minutes after we've cleaned it, either after the morning cleaning or the afternoon cleaning, the next folk that can walk in is like, I can't believe you folks don't clean your restrooms. But that's okay. Those events are going to occur. We know we're committed to cleaning our restrooms that many times. And if you think about it, we're a pretty small community. We have nine public restrooms, nine. When we did our, when we did our white paper for the Department of Public Works, we were off the charts for the number of public restrooms for comparable communities. Not even close to the number of public restrooms that we have for comparable communities. Outside, we have that many. Which I take as a, which I take as a great sense of pride. I mean, it's kind of like the number of parks.
And we had even more than some larger communities.
We had more than many larger communities, correct?
Page 57.
Wait, before we get off, I have a question, parks.
Go ahead.
Parks area. We're looking at forecasting reduction on the contractual repairs and maintenance down to 22. We had 83 in 2013. Looks like we're approaching 80, or have 80,000 for this year. I'm just concerned to make sure, you know, are those one-time type repairs like we had in the bathroom, destruction, should we be planning something a little bit higher in those repairs? You know, if there's one-time incidents, could be, are we just having them like once a year?
I believe the pool and the.
Oh, that's right.
The pool in the Reeds Park, since stuff came out of that.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, I forgot, yeah.
And the only reason for the pool in Reeds Park is we felt that that was a more appropriate location, and they really felt like us, they felt like appropriations, not, not operational expenses.
Well, specifically for Reeds Park, for that amount of money, through the purchasing policy, I have to give competitive bids on that. And so I can't stay in compliance the way that it was set up before. If it's an appropriation, then that takes that responsibility away from me.
And I think, Colleen, part of the, part of the answer to that question is to, I think we did have some higher numbers. There was, they were addressing a lot of preferred maintenance, and I think they've caught up with a fair amount of that?
Yeah, because that's actually a $60,000.
Yeah, we're still, we're still. No, what's going on here?
It's actually a $60,000 drop over this year, and you take 40, so there's still a $20,000 drop in that depart, you know? And again, if you take 40,000 out of the 2013, you're still dropping those repairs down about $20,000. And I just want to make sure that we're not maybe making that.
Start changing yourselves.
We had to reduce those numbers in order to make the budget balance.
Okay, so then how do we make up those? I mean, history tells us that we're going to have something higher there.
Right. Well, some of that, I mean, that's partially right. We made some, I think we made some good strides moving forward. We have looked at all of our subcontract that we've been doing and have met with, like the landscaping company that we work with, and have, I believe we'll return some, some money back to the department by understanding what they're responsible for and what we're responsible for. I don't remember what the other big drop was, and I go, Ed.
Another thing to point out, there's also, there's two repair and maintenance line items. One's contractual, and one is just regular repairs and maintenance. And although we've got a little bit higher projected for 2014, our actual in 2013 was only 28,000, which is about 10,000 less. So between those two of them, if you look at them, there's still reduction, but there's, you know, those numbers do fluctuate, and gains are just fluctuating. I can see, I can recall.
Yeah, I don't need the big answers tonight. I just want to make sure that when we're looking at this, that we're not going to. Because then how are we going to make up those, you know, funds somewhere else in the budget?
Yeah, because even if you add the two, it's only 62,200.
And again, I don't want to penny any, but if these add up, just a second, look at that, make sure that those estimates are, you still feel comfortable with those.
I have a non-budget question. The bathroom cleaning in the summer, do they clean the water fountains, too? I mean, that's part of their job.
The, the what?
Water fountains.
The drinking fountains.
Drinking fountains. Water fountains.
Drinking fountains. It's supposed to be, yes.
Because the one at Goody's had this much gook in it because of the, it was running, it was not repaired. So I think I called, I think I called Jeff on that, but that, that being kind of a little black eye for us, too, to have that in our downtown.
That's one of the most challenging facilities to keep maintained.
Yes.
But probably sees more traffic than probably the beach, the ball diamonds, right?
There's homeless impacts, there's patron impacts, there's resident impacts around there.
Vandalize frequently.
Yeah.
We haven't had the major vandalism, that's not true. We've had major vandalism inside that restroom. Not the major vandalism that we had, for example, out at Lighthouse Park last year, nothing of that degree. This vandalism is more of the Sharpies and scratching the doors up and that, those kind of things.
Emptying out the toilet paper and the little paper towels.
Yeah, right, 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 it's the.
People sleeping in there.
People sleeping in there, yeah.
Yeah, the good news is that it gets a lot of activity, so during the day, there's a lot of, a lot of the local businesses that check on it, keep us up to date when there's an issue.
The stall dividers and that, and I haven't been in it, I haven't been in those bathrooms. I don't, I can run home, you know, I'm blocks away. But the stall dividers, are they metal or are they the starboard type?
I believe those are metal.
Okay.
And the goodies. I believe, I believe those are metal in goodies. The more recent ones we have put up, such as in the Marina restrooms, those are the composite.
Starboard.
I'm not sure, what, what do you?
It's starboard, it's what we always use that for when it's composite material.
Okay, composite, okay, composite.
That stuff, it is indestructible.
It is, it is. It still cars well, I found.
Oh, yeah, you can park it.
They still car well with it.
But it cleans, you can, can park it.
You can, you can, you can actually melt it down, I mean.
Actually, I've never seen a field.
I got one more. 857, you got a 50% increase in your MERS? And I don't know. Got to be a compliance.
Let me address the parks maintenance real quick, if I might. The difference in the, some of the difference in the parks maintenance is that we, we had more costs in portable toilets in the actual or in the budget of the previous year because of First Street, with the construction of the thing, so there's a reduction there. The amount that was in the budget for Reeds Park, in the parks budget, was 7,500, but their bills the last several years haven't come in at that amount. So we moved that to appropriations, we lowered it to a more realistic number, and then you've got the 40,000 pool. So we actually increased a couple of the line items for sprinklers and turf maintenance and some landscaping in the parks budget. But, I mean, Jeff would have to be the one to see if he thinks that's adequate or he needs a little bit more, but that's basically the difference.
Okay.
So was there a question?
Okay, both police and fire, the MERS is up, one's up 10%, and one's up 15%. What's, what's driving this?
The MERS is an interesting creature. The fire department is up substantially in MERS. They are the most underfunded division that we have in the city. And overall, the city's almost. Overall, the city's almost 100% funded. I advise the city manager that when the next contract is up, we need to look at potentially some reforms on the firefighter's pension. We haven't discussed what those might be. But I do expect that those increases will start to turn around. You have to remember, the stock market took a dive in 2008 and crashed for about a year, and then it has more than recovered. But it takes a while for those losses and then subsequent gains to work their way through the system, because the pension fund smoothed out the market value of the thing. That's part of the number that goes into the actuarial valuation. So we have had some increases, particularly in the fire department in the last few years, but those should either start to turn around or smooth out at the very least as the market gains of the last several years start to get figured back in. But I do believe for both of our public safety unions that we need to look at some, some reforms there, perhaps renew hires moving forward, but we won't be able to do that until those contracts are open.
You know, looking at other cities and their pensions, we're, we're really lucky. I look at Traverse City, but they're.
I, I take it a slightly different twist. I don't think it's lucky, I think good decisions.
Good fiscal responsibility.
Good decisions have been made.
That's right.
I think it is a byproduct of having reasonable benefits and having employee contributions. When we look, when we just look around here, whether it be the road commission or Manistee County, there is a different scenario being played out in our, in our own backyard for the OPEC, other post-employment benefits. And you hear that a lot when you go to the conferences, you hear OPEC speakers a lot and those benefits. But we have employees contribute to the plan as part of, as part of the MERS plan, MERS, Michigan Employer Retirement System, as well as, I don't think we have out, we don't have as high as benefits as other communities do in the general area. And that helps keep us in a healthy funding level.
With the fire and police, how does the PIL grants affect the budget?
They, they really, they don't impact the general fund budget. We, basically, there's very little capital expenditure in the general fund budget. So if there are needs for public safety equipment, like whether it be protective gear or what have you, Dave normally will write a revenue sharing grant. If he gets the grants, then he acquires the equipment, and if he doesn't get the grant, then he either looks for another funding source or just, you know, do it till the next cycle. So it's a positive to the budget. The Revenue Sharing Board has contributed greatly to the modernization of our police and fire, no doubt about it. They wouldn't be anywhere near where they are without those. But they're, they're not, they're not actively budgeting for capital stuff in the general fund because of the tightens of the budget the last three or four years. And they've got that source of funding by the local Revenue Sharing Board, which has to give money to public safety, so that's how they've done it.
I want to make sure you meant PIL when you said PIL, you meant the local revenue sharing.
Right, right. Now, I was, I was thinking using the local revenue for the EMS training, because that's what, 60?
Well, actually, if you, if you look at it, we have, we actually have $12,000 budgeted coming out of, we have it last year, and I believe it was funded last year by the local Revenue Sharing Board, and we have another $12,000 in the, to be used out of the general fund. We have a corresponding local Revenue Sharing Board. We have a corresponding local revenue sharing board grant that was approved, I don't remember how many weeks ago it was approved by council. A month ago? Somewhere about that timeframe. So there's an, actually, there's a $12,000 grant in front of the local revenue sharing board, asking them to assist in the paramedic training, which is what you're referring to right now. And if we get that grant from the local revenue sharing board, then we wouldn't be taking that money out of the general fund budget. General fund, fund balance, excuse me.
So that's basically how it affects it.
The only thing, maybe I might have turned on this one, but during the review of Gold's objective, we kind of looked at the parks department, and I thought one of the things we looked at was additional part-time help. I didn't see this, was this something, I can't remember if this is something that we put on the plate or not.
I don't know. It's not in the strategic plan?
I recall discussing a adopted park program.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that was part of animizing some of those costs that would be associated with our parks and maintaining them over the summer.
But I don't remember recalling increasing any headcount for, for that.
Councilmember Cody, one of the things, we, we budget in or we pencil in when we do the part-time budget for the parks department, X number of employees at X number of weeks, starting a certain time. And inevitably, we don't get the physicians filled at the beginning as much as we think, and they leave earlier, so we're almost always under budget in that number, so there's potentially room there, depending on how Jeff, if they hire people.
That's understood.
We didn't explicitly, we didn't explicitly allocate more funds.
Well, part-time is up 11,000 over projected this year.
Yeah, I think I had that circulated.
And it's up over 18,000 over the year before. So there is increased salary in there over this.
Okay, well, I could, I couldn't remember, were we, I knew there's something that we had to do with the parks or some discussion. I thought it was with part-time help or not, because one of the things you said, you said Gold's objective, what you had to do, you got to help them achieve. And I thought that was some of the, some of the thoughts we had, that we needed help or whatever to, to do that. And evidently, it might have been a different direction.
And that's why I'd like to ask the budget, and that's why I'd like to ask the budget compared to what we think is going to happen this year, because some of those discussions do happen during the year. And as you see, the costs are up higher for that part-time over this year for next year.
Here, one of the, one of the reasons for that in the parks department was we added a seventh summer employee this year in anticipation, well, after we signed a contract with the Housing Commission to take on some of their facility maintenance with the lawns and stuff. So that was, it was a corresponding revenue stream to offset that additional cost. That doesn't, that's not going to happen in this upcoming year. We will not have that additional revenue, and we will not hire that seventh employee.
So the revenue, which went through the, the part-time line item?
No, we prepared the budget, assuming that we have the same contract with the Housing Commission, which had revenue and the general fund and a little more wages, and then since that time, Frank has informed the city that they don't want to do that contract again. So he won't, probably the other person, then won't get the revenue. We made, we made money on it last year.
So that, are you saying then that that line item probably won't be that high? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, because, because there won't be revenue to.
So it's budgeted for 49, so what you just told me is that that should come in less than that 49, just because of that statement you just made?
Correct.
Okay. Then you had brought up the police, and I just, this is more kind of a council discussion. We had talked about, you know, there's concerns, safety concerns about our officers, only one in the vehicle at night. And putting in an additional person, whether that would be that, we talked about a volunteer. Looking strictly at, with the budgeted numbers, it does not look like we're budgeting any additional help in that.
Did not, that is correct.
Well, we need to.
Well, this is a discussion, you know, what that cost is going to be, are we, how is Dave really pursuing like the volunteers? Whether that was not deemed a really a good solution?
I think it was, it was a, I think he thought it was a, it was an appropriate solution to move forward. We had put, we had put a request form with the local revenue sharing board that didn't get funded, so that kind of took a little bit of steam out of that sale, but I think everyone recognizes that we have officers out there that are wanting a car.
So can you look at what that additional cost would be?
Sure.
And then how we, then what would we have to do in the budget in order to cover that?
So what additional cost would be in relationship to eliminating the one cars during the evening hours?
Well, having two officers, car is going to be so.
Yeah, correct, having two, having two officers in a car.
I'm not saying change the budget, but what would that, what would we have to do in this current budget to make that happen?
To get two people in the car.
Two people in the car. What would be, what would be that financial update?
Right, no, I'm not looking for that tonight.
Absolutely.
Well, that was the discussion we had before, and we asked Chief Bachman exactly the, you know, what's the approach that he would like to see from, you know, one headcount or implement the volunteer program? And he was clearly on the, on the side of having the more flexibility and capacity for the volunteer program, because it gave him more officers for a less amount of money. And I would, personally, I would take Chief Bachman's recommendation well over mine, or even some of the council members that, just to, to say, hey, let's put on two more officers, that might not give him exactly what. There might be three FTEs, there might be four FTEs, we don't, we don't know where that would land based on how many, you know, times they're out by themselves. But I would definitely defer to Chief Bachman on what he thought would be the most appropriate solution to that and which makes sense.
Okay, you put your wife out there alone, I'll do it. I'm here, this is my wife, I'm sorry, this is my wife. And I'm making it personal, yes, but yes, you are. This is, we're talking about people safe here.
I'm trying to be very respectful, you don't have to yell at me.
I didn't yell, I didn't raise my voice.
I'm asking for Chief Bachman's recommendation, not, not mine. And that's all, that's all I'm saying. The man who runs the department, who's been doing police enforcement for 30 years.
Beautiful.
That's why I was going to take a.
Well, I think there's, we, I'd like to look at, we have the current budget, you know, pursuing the volunteer police officers, because Dave did say that they would offer some flexibility, but that could take a while, that there could be some problems implementing that.
And how can we get a second person in a car?
And I'm not even saying that we should do that in the budget, but let's look at what that cost would be, what we would have to do if council chose to do that.
We will have, we will have, we'll have that conversation with Chief Bachman tomorrow morning, and he will be here at the next council meeting to be able to address all those questions first, council.
Yeah, and one of that's still, you know, a thing that we can do, using those.
And clearly, I, I don't want to put our officers at risk.
Nobody does, yeah.
I really don't, I mean, that's not, that wasn't my thing. And I feel bad if your wife's out on the road by herself, that's not my, my thing.
And it's not just.
Chief Bachman just mentioned that that was the most flexible and most appropriate manner to cover the amount of gas that are out there. I was only listening to who I would put in a very high regard, knowing how to manage his force, that's all. And again, I don't want, I don't want to by any means think that we love putting those people out for, you know, putting in harm's way, ever.
You know, this is, we've talked about this quite a bit last, at the last budget, and I think further discussion with this, I think, with you have Chief Bachman here. You see, you know, I know we talked about putting on reserves, you know, I do not know where I went. I, I knew initially there was a lot of interest in it, and then it tapered off, and where things are right now, I guess I don't know. I guess, we need to hear it in a horse's mouth, and.
And we need to.
Because there is, there's a training cost even with the, with the volunteer that did get funded, so I think that it probably did die down. So are we, do we then either need to budget something in there for that, or increase in salaries, or leave it alone and look at it down the road? That's, as long as we have that information in front of us, then we can make a more.
I'd like to see the information before I, before I make a decision, but I, I agree with, with Councilman Goodspeed that we have to take a look at it, one way or another. I, I, every morning I wake up and think, you know, only one person out on the road by themselves on a midnight shift. I don't think it's appropriate, I don't think a fireman would go into a, into a burning building by himself, and I wouldn't expect an officer to go out on the road by himself. They say they rely on the sheriff's department and the state police, I talked to the sheriff, there's nights that they don't have a car on, and the state police is 20, 30, 40 miles away.
No, no one is saying anything that everyone isn't feeling. But these are the cold, hard realities of a certain amount of revenue, and decisions have to be made. And every single day, every single day in Detroit and Grand Rapids, people's lives are put at risk because they have less police officers and less firemen on the streets. We all know that those things can occur. We'll definitely have Chief Bachman here, he will ask the questions in advance, we'll give him the questions in advance, he'll be at the meeting. And, and, and council has the ultimate ability to make that decision as to, that's a higher priority than this item over here. And whether that's Parks for Recreation, or Ramsville Theater, or travel and training for other things, you always have that ultimate, that is your ultimate decision to make as to a priority.
And with that, if he's got, has the estimate for the training that would have to come out of the budget, and if it's realistic, he could get those volunteers.
And even some implementation is, it'll probably well over a year before it'd be launched, so.
Right.
What about under appropriations, page 71? Last year, we agreed to $24,000 to PEG and on the welcomeers, so they could buy more equipment. Now we're automatically giving them 25,000, and we know how funding their operation, not that I don't love it, but I pushed hard to, so they get the additional, was it 10, 12,000 dollars last year to do their, their upgrades. Is this, what is the?
PEG asked for a $1,500, well, there was a $1,500 increase granted to PEG, I don't remember exactly how the discussion was. This year, the request came in at 26,000, I called Keith and asked him if that was a typo, because his letter said that he wanted the same as last year, which was 25.5, but then he said it was 26, and he goes, I'll just leave it at 26. And the manager's recommendation was 25.5. Those are purely within the discretion of council to change that because they.
I understand last year, because.
But don't forget also, PEG last year got two significant, and don't ask me the dollar amounts, I can't recall off the top of my head, but I believe they got either for sure one, but I believe two significant local revenue sharing board grants, maybe only one?
I only remember one, that doesn't mean anything.
Or for some of their capital.
I just, I don't know, I would like to see the letter Y, the 26. Coming before, years prior, I think they were 10,000, we tripled her.
Well, absolutely, get that for you.
Do you mind?
Absolutely.
I could name you the greatest.
I.
Can you give me that?
And then.
Is there a budget?
Um, it was not, it came, all of those were a little bit delayed. So I have them, and I'll put them together, and I'll get them to council tomorrow. They came later than actually. That's, that's on me, because I didn't get the request.
And I think if you, once we look at that, that might be self-explanatory for that 25, or it may prove that, you know, that's more than we want to appropriate.
And I still, not that I don't love the MRA, I do, but I think we're now funding most of a significant amount of their budget now.
That is true. Their budget's a little over, I think, as a board member, I believe we're in 110,000 range, somewhere in 110, 120,000 range. And you can see what the request is for.
I guess it never ceases to make to, we're the, we do most of the funding for, you know, all these appropriations. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, but it seems like all the, all county areas use our facilities for junior baseball, whatever. And we, we fund it all. I, I don't see Manistee Township, Philer Township, but.
You know, Manistee Township, they, they have an appropriation for MRA. Philer Charter Township has a strong appropriation for MRA.
Not 28,000 though.
Absolutely not, they don't have the population that we have also.
Well, Manistee Township, they cover a big area, you know, when that come up, you know, when that come up. And I'm not saying we shouldn't.
I often feel like for appropriations, I often feel like Blue Cross will show, we're the funder of last resort. I, I often feel that way about many of the appropriations. And you can make the same, you can make the same argument, quite frankly, for the pool.
Absolutely.
I can make the exact same argument for the pool, the question is, would that pool have been built if the city of Manistee would not have stepped up and been that community organization? Because he wasn't going to build it, Mr. Payne was not going to provide the funds, if it was simply a MAPS donation directed to MAPS, or had to be that.
Community.
That community involvement. And at that point in time, the city of Manistee stepped up, and is still paying $40,000 on the annual basis. But you can make that same argument for each and every one of the appropriations.
And I don't, and I don't disagree with the, with the pool, I think it's a great asset for the county, you know.
It's the same thing as MRA.
Sure.
If you want to look at number of participants in MRA compared to the pool, I think probably the MRA has more participants using the MRA.
Well, you take.
Look at those. But $30,000 is a salary for a police officer.
Oh, absolutely.
The pool also provides, MRA uses that for swimming.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, ma'am.
They answered, Councilmember Goodspeed, your question about PEG and what grants, they've got, they've got two local revenue sharing board grants. One, they were both for 10,000, one was in 2011, and one was in 2012.
Change your rates.
I just know that last year, we doubled this just so they could buy the rest of the equipment, and now.
I, yeah, I just think we.
Well, I think once we look at their budget, I think that would, so.
You know, I was just thinking.
You can, you can make the same argument for 211.
We were talking about the pool, and I'd like to continue with the pool. I know that the hospital uses it for physical therapy, and they contract those services and they use?
I, I believe they do.
They contract.
Double check with MAPS. There was an article, it was a few days ago, it's the small therapy pool. I think, I believe that the, the agreement with the Manistee Republic Schools and the city of Manistee and Mr. Payne, Payne family was in 2008. And that was a 10-year commitment of $40,000 a year, which means we roughly have four more years of guaranteed commitment towards that particular project.
And then it's supposed to be self-funding?
I believe that is, you can substitute the Ramsville Theater for that contract. I don't believe by any stretch of the imagination that that is intended to be a self-supported facility.
I do think, I will try to send the newspaper article, there was two articles about the pool recently in the paper, and I think some of the comments of the school administration were, would be of interest to city council to read.
I found them of great interest.
So I think I'll send those, I'm doing these problems.
I actually think that the pool is an excellent idea. It's the type of public-private funding that I grew up with in community pools.
I simply didn't want you to get the impression that, that that was going to be a break-even venture. I believe that Mr. Howard Boss, the finance, the business manager for MAPS, was sitting here today. I don't believe he would be telling you that he thought that that was going to be a, a break-even venture in four years.
The pool agreement was signed February 13, 2008.
But, well, I think the conversations, I'm not advocating one way or the other, that if the city, after the 10 years, had to start ratcheting down their appropriation, how would they handle that if they could?
We've actually, we've actually had some of those preliminary conversations with MAPS. Knowing that we're four years out, knowing that, assuming that those conversations we had, we've actually had some of those preliminary conversations with MAPS, and we'll continue to have them with those.
And I'm not advocating anyone, because each one of these organizations offer equality of life for the city of Manistee.
Absolutely, ma'am.
And that is part of our strategic objective too, is providing quality of life.
Well, just to comment on the pool, the last time I flew home, my travel, I was on the plane with some swimmers.
Well, just to comment on the pool, last time I flew home in my travel, I was on the plane with some swimmers from TC West, Tom Wong from Manistee, and they, they said that this is one of the finest pools to compete in, in the state.
That's pretty nice.
And maybe they can offer more tournaments here, charging to get people to come in.
You know, I mean, when I grew up, the, the Father City Pool, it was a dollar fifty or something, you'd use it for a day, and there was a, there was a minor charge for that, I mean, maybe they're going to get to a point where they've got to start...
It's like three bucks.
Yeah.
It's like three bucks right now.
It's like three bucks.
Yeah, it's six dollars for if you, for anybody that doesn't contribute, for city resident, or for residents, it's six dollars, if you contribute, it's three.
I think, I think they have arrangements with Firelord Township, the Lee Stronach, and the city of Manistee. Nobody would...
Five, Manistee. It was five bucks for an all-day swim or whatever. Those are things that they're, they're going to have to look at too, I mean...
Yeah, they're currently doing all those things. They absolutely...
Those rates may have to be higher.
Pay to play.
Stronach, Firelord, and Manistee.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I have some questions I can just email you, they're just trying to get a better understanding. So based on conversations here tonight, I think the major questions as a whole would be surrounded around the police department and on our capital improvement plan. What I'd like to know is how we're going to be funding those, you know, that listing that they have, the four million. Granted, most of that's gonna, is in the water and sewer, and that's supposed to be funded by the rate increases, but the rest of that, how, and I know you talked about some of it, it's grant, but this year, is it going to be grant money? Is it going to be, like, general fund money?
Keep a breakdown.
Yeah. And if it's grant money, we don't get the grant.
How rare.
Each of the, each of the capital improvement sheets, and I'll be happy to summarize this in a different fashion, but example...
There's a funding source.
It has a funding source, and it talks about what that funding source is. So as an example, so if you look at...